Did you? Yeah, no, I don't. Yeah, I don't know. Okay. Should have just mentioned that. Yeah, thanks.
No. Not at all. How would they? How can they be? Because we just had that story.
Yeah. Yeah. I agree. Question. Well, not no, but new to you. Yeah. Is it if I'm? I have two cards to maintain. That just went.
Yeah.
I know what that's like though. I do. I'd like to read the system of my, I mean, I say this in America. And to worry hardly for which is saying is one nation under, anybody visible, but with the regime and justice for all.
Sure. I'll open us up today. Sure. I'd like to add some more silence to get our thoughts together.
Thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
Okay. Commissioner Heckman.
Here.
Commissioner Farag.
Here.
Commissioner Skara.
Here.
Commissioner Ruben.
Here.
Commissioner Van Nistern.
Here. Thank you. Public comment. Any public comment this morning? We need a public comment. Move on agenda. They would motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So move to support.
Thank you. We've supported all the people. Say hi.
Yes.
Someone opposed. Minutes, July seventeenth. If I could just point our attention to the page two, Etan County Road Commission. Take force, first sentence down. It indicates expenses are down about. I believe I say eight hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand from two thousand three. I don't recall that.
I don't recall it.
I don't recall it. Yeah. So could we delete?
Yes, I agree.
Delete that sentence. Thank you. Anything else?
The first line of the minutes is should be six thirty P M.
Thank you. Anything else? May I get a motion with those changes, please?
Make a motion that we accept the minutes as amended.
Well, support. Thank you. All is fair. Please say hi.
Yeah.
Hi. Anyone opposed? Any liaison committee reports? Tips?
Yeah, the Etan County Fair is happening right now, so. It's Thursday, Friday, Saturday. The horse show was last night, so. I just encourage people to go and enjoy it and see the animals and. The fair board has put a ton of work into it over the last year to get ready for this week, so.
Okay. Thank you.
The C R A's. Golden Jubilee picnic. It is. On the fourteenth, which is next Thursday at ten thirty at the senior center. Everybody's welcome to attend. And I think Jeremy, do we have information on the? Did they get information to you, Annabella or Lofts?
Yeah, that that they got the first one in place.
Yes. Yep. It was really cool to watch that. If you get a chance and you're in town. Go check that out. They're setting them one on top of the other one. And it's really cool to watch them do it. But yes, they're moving along. They're gonna stage them. Out at Craven Park. They're gonna be bringing them in. I think they figured they'll have fifty of them staged in there. And they'll bring them in and set them. They can set ten a day and they can deliver five a day. So. It's going like that. It's gonna, that's gonna start moving really quick.
And if you have a waiting list for anybody that knows somebody that's looking for housing, trying to find a better solution. Anything else? Okay, thank you. There's no older unfinished business today. New business claims and accounts. Can I get a motion to approve claims and accounts? And out of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventeen cents, please.
I'll make that motion.
Sir, a second? I'll support. I've been supporting and questions on the bills.
Number sixteen. District, Grand Travis County District and Circuit Court. Is that? Too much? For both of them, May? They did. We didn't have those for May, and now we got them for this one too. So yeah, they were, they were behind again, Harris. Imagine this. Imagine that. And then number forty-nine Shoreline Power Services. For fourteen thousand, five ninety-nine. Oh, and dryers. What is?
Dryer and dryer's part?
Dryer's part. Yeah, okay. And? And washers and dryers? Or what's the timer? The coin. The swipe where you swipe your credit card to do. She can probably tell.
Shower, uh, for the showers. Okay.
And dryers, the one in the left, it's one side.
I bet. Lindsay, why don't you come up and repeat that for the microphone, please? Hold that microphone down too. Thanks, Lindsay.
Okay, so the short. Fletcherville was for Barnes Park for three projects. They did.
All right, I'll say it again. So now it's a, we're showing.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yeah, there's most of the second all in favor. Please say aye.
Yeah.
Anyone opposed? In reports, we've got one, two, three, four, five in reports in person, one written. Again, ask everyone to stay fifteen minutes, leave opportunity after that for any questions. And we'll start with the sheriff this morning. Good morning, Kevin.
Good morning. How's everybody doing today? Fantastic. Wonderful. Station, I do. Shows George in hand. No, I'm just kidding. Or maybe Sherry. All right, Mr. Scott, is that held up here? There we go, actually. So I can't take the credit for just photographs, so.
Speaking of George.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Appreciate that, sir. So just real quick, that history of those. Definitely Taco took this photograph with the northern lights. I did an amazing job, so. Showing photograph about patrol local. She was the new, but that's okay. So. And exchange, please.
Let me just. There should be actual remote thing. But. Anyway. Sit down, you know.
Backwards. That's okay. So this actually my son, my undershirt, sure flash it or ask the students of Anantra County. To, to do a. Drug free like a puzzle to put something together. Students are amazing. We. To add these different schools. Some reason it's backwards. I apologize, folks.
That's bad.
So this one here shows. That's an elementary that shows the two students that did their drawings. And go to the next slide here. Elementary school, you know, making a life as a puzzle to be drug free. But we definitely got the message acrossed. And that. This one was. Central Academy, again. Showing the. You can show the. Then at the bottom, then at the top. That seem not okay? All right, good. And then we have. And. I mean. Very talented. I mean, this is, this is amazing. This young lady, she was extremely excited when we presented her with an award. She says she done this very, very quick, which. Very talented. So and then the next one's gonna be Central Lake. And it shows, again, a couple of students for drug free. And Central Lake. Another one. Just to give you a little idea of what, what we, we don't just arrest bad guys all the time. We do with the students and the kids involved in our community with the sheriff's office. So. So the revenue of the county. And you look through your civil process, that's our paper service individual. Two thousand twenty-three, we had twenty-two thousand, one hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents. Two thousand twenty-four. Twenty-three thousand, two hundred fifty-three dollars, twenty-four cents with the variance that we brought revenue in the county of one thousand, one hundred one dollars and sixty-five cents. You want me to read all these? I mean, okay, thank you. So it would be brought me to, I'd be happy to explain whatever we have here, so. And the revenue of grants, this is a big one. This is grants that we apply for. That are given to us, awarded to us, like the vote group best that I provide all my officers. We had a positive of almost four thousand dollars just for vote request. Secondary roads, we're on secondary road this year. It's hit and miss on that, but you can see the numbers. I mean, we're getting sixty-five, over sixty-five thousand dollars. For our secondary road patrol officer, which the county doesn't pay a whole lot for that officer. And you're gonna see an increase next year. He is actually just about, the state of Michigan is paying just about ninety-three thousand dollars. So it's amazing. This is my pistol. This shows. That in twenty-three, we had seventy applications that were approved. This year, or excuse me, twenty-four, we had two hundred seven that were approved. And it just gave you a breakdown of license denied in twenty-three. There were three, none for this year. And unused licenses, twenty-four, there were fifty-nine, twenty-three, there were twenty-five. So for a total, which is of last year of eighteen fifty-four.
Why is that so much less than the year before? I don't know.
Maybe everybody's pretty much got the license that they want, or there's just. More people feel they need to have a license. So it's, it's hard to say why people do what they do sometimes on getting a license with that. I know. My, my wife has a C P L and she definitely exercises it, so. And this gives you a breakdown. The P S R, the pistol sale record, two hundred and seven, applications approved, we had two hundred and seven. And it breaks it down to federal firearms licensing, purchaser fourteen. I could go through the whole thing, but we'll be here a while, so. And this right here is a big one. This is summary of offenses. Let's get you a breakdown of all the calls for service that we have. It breaks it down by, by the crime, or it could be a civil or whatnot. But the assist citizen, two thousand twenty-three compared to this year, fifty-four for last year, assuming twenty-three and twenty-four, we had two hundred and twenty-seven. There's no reason why it was a big difference. It's just we have a lot of call volume in the assisting the citizen. And as you look down, you got your noise complaints, fireworks, it's gone down about thirty-five. And I think it helped out a lot with the noise complaint ordinance that we have with fireworks, which has been a big help. And as you look further, we'll be looking. Violation of control substance. You got twenty-three of, on you and two thousand twenty-four, you got sixteen. Two thousand twenty-four went down, and I have to say it's because of this man back here. So thank you. But then the property is gone now. And you got in the European ninety-six and twenty-three and sixty-nine, two thousand twenty-four. And. Good look at your due now court ability. It's gone down nine. It was eighty-nine, twenty-three and eighteen, two thousand twenty-four. Your civil matters have gone down, family disputes. It's gone down by forty-six points. One I wanted to show you. The. License, driving on suspended license. We don't arrest on that anymore. I mean. Technically, there's a warrant is issued later on. We write up a citation, send them on their way with a valid driver, we told them to be. So that's a big change in what our statutes do or in what we arrest people now. We used to arrest them all the time. They get in a, driving out of suspended or revoked. They go to jail. Eventually they will, but we just don't arrest them right on the spot. So in two thousand twenty-three, we had five hundred, excuse me, five thousand, four hundred sixty-five calls for service compared to two thousand twenty-four, four thousand, six hundred twenty-eight. So we're down, you know, almost eight hundred and forty calls for service. Our jail income. This is good information. So two thousand twenty-three compared to twenty-four. We got, we have a first aid processing fee when they first come in and charge them. So in twenty-four, we collected five thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and eighteen cents. Booking fee we collected in twenty-four, two thousand nine hundred and ninety. Sorry about that, guys. Hey, welcome. So back up. There you go. There we go. So sorry about that. And what we move things to the state, we actually get that. And that's five hundred eighty-seven dollars for twenty-four. And daily volume fee, we do charge for housing, for staying in our facility. That was a total of one thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollars and thirty-three cents. And medical reimbursements in twenty-three, we had twenty-two seventy. And in two thousand twenty-four, we had two hundred and eight dollars, and I can explain why that's so much lower. The officer that we had at that time was. I'm not gonna get into a whole lot of stuff with that, but there was, there was some serious things, not with her, but. Some family member situation and my heart goes out to her. So. She had a lot on her plate and, but we are reflecting these overdue reimbursements. So. For a total of two thousand, twenty-four, we had ten thousand, seven hundred and twelve thousand, seventy-eight cents income to the jails. Jail average population. The dealer population is twenty-one, male population average seventeen, male sentenced seven, average male unsentenced ten. Female population four and sentenced two and unsentences two. Average cost per inmate for two thousand twenty-four. You can go down the list here and it's a twelve month calendar and you have. Different numbers here. You know, you got twenty-two inmates in January and then you twenty-two in February. Why is it such a difference? Five dollars difference? So that goes down to. Commissary, what, what they purchased, what other inmates have purchased more than the other inmates. So if that clarifies for everyone, so and obviously December, you got a higher rate than all the other days. And it was only twenty inmates in there. So somebody is probably purchasing more than the other one, as I said. Jail booking. I gotta go back up through this one here. This video just shows you how many individuals a deputy has booked in. It just, it just brings it down. I'm not gonna go over that whole thing, so. Jail expenses. Basically going over the prisoner board, which is the food that our inmates eat. The electricity, the gas and a trash removal, you know, changes here. So I'm an Instagram guy. I like, I like to have these, so it just gives you a breakdown and. With a lot of food, gas and trash removal. It was a hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and one dollars, eighty-nine cents. It's actually not to run yet. So. So this breaks down to inmate health services. When an inmate goes and sees the doctor, that they go get x-rays done outside of our facility. And go sees the nurse, it breaks down to our part-time nurse who we haven't had in some time. And our doctor of the jail as well. So those numbers are there. But in fact, I apologize. So do you guys have any questions so far? So the next slide here is gonna be on our fingerprinting. So it goes, it's a. So it goes, it's a point on calendar, of course, for two thousand twenty-four, it just gives you the criminal arrest of someone that's been printed. It breaks it down to applicants, someone that wants to, it needs fingerprint for applicant, for application, excuse me. And it was a total crime, criminal arrest prints of two hundred and fifty-eight. And we don't print every person that comes into our facility, so it doesn't require that on on most people. And total applicant prints, uh three hundred and twenty-three, total prints altogether, five hundred and eighty around, so an average monthly is about forty-eight. So down to our Antrim County diverted felons, and what that means is basically we're housing someone for Department of Corrections. They most likely been uh in the court system. And they should have been sent to prison, but they diverted them to county town, so if that makes sense. So, so we need, we get this month, so the the county does. So in May, we diverted anything, we got a thousand forty-five, in June, we got a thousand sixty, six hundred and fifty. July, we got one thousand seven hundred and five, so on, for a total of seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. So here's uh, the next one is a parole detainer. And basically what that means is saying the parole division, contact central dispatcher corrections, and they say, hey. Uh we have uh John Doe, who was not uh binding by his parole um guidelines. I'm gonna, we're gonna put a detainer on him, and then we go pick him up and we put him in our, our county jail. And we get reimbursed, and two thousand twenty-four, we'll get reimbursed at one thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. This next one is, it's a really good breakdown, which I really like, it shows. Our courthouse security, it shows a lot of everyone that's come in, they do a counter. In two thousand twenty-four, obviously, starting in January, six hundred and eighty-one individuals entered that courtroom for courthouse. Eighteen weapons out of the six hundred and eighty-one individuals were confiscated. They were given back depending on if it was illegal weapon that they had, whether they have CPL or whatnot. So, and.
I'll give you a two-minute warning, I'm sure.
Oh, I gotta hurry, so.
I don't wanna play, I can't play favorites, you know that.
So the uh, this shows our. Dare, it just gives you a breakdown of. How many lockdowns, which by state law, we gotta have three for each, you know, for the school year, and it does uh the dare, the canine, and so on. And our zero tolerance, uh we give out a scram, which is a uh secure uh continuous remote alcohol learning device. And this, it was, let's see, snowing on here, candy out, yeah, okay, thank you, can't read that far, so. Um so this is gonna give you a breakdown of our snow patrol, it was a lot better than twenty-three. We had a lot more snow, so it just gives you, you know, a breakdown of tickets of seventy-one, two hundred and twenty, two hundred and fifteen warnings. And eight hundred and eighteen contacts. I'm reindeer. Same thing, it just gives you all contacts. I'm checking reports, excuse me, this is gonna be nine-one-one stuff. So this is another Instagram, it just gives you uh calls of service. Gives you uh the time of day, uh that someone has called, so. At about ten o'clock at night, it gives you uh almost uh ten thousand calls. And calls of service by day of the week. Guys from out there, so.
That's right, right on time, Cal, right on time, right on time, questions for, uh questions for the sheriff. Chicks. On the, on the there, there's a few schools that have zeros, I'm just wondering. And I don't know what, there's someone that are in the forties, someone are in the twenties, I'm, I'm not familiar exactly what they do, or so.
Does it say NA? What school are you looking at?
Says Ellsworth is zero, that's, that's just one of them.
I mean, since I know where else we're.
We don't mean building pleasure here, so. And then Al- Alba is zero also. It looks like that we, that other, every other school is listed as. Having some on here anyway, well, not every school, but.
So are you talking about the fingerprint?
This says annual school stats, Antrim County School goes on officer.
Yeah, so the fingerprint, um. The poverty stuff, we, we didn't come back with that, so we have started in for this year, for two thousand twenty-five. Two thousand twenty-four, we didn't do the fingerprint. Um to get into the special events, I'm not sure why it zeroed out on that, that been easier Christian. My understanding is is with parades, which Ellsworth always has a parade, and our dairy individual is in there, so. And juvenile complaints for El Rapids, that basically just means there was no juvenile complaints that we had as uh dairy officers. And if you get into the NA, which is not applicable, that is because Mill Creek is in Grand Traverse County. So they all handle their juvenile complaints, but we just provide dare for that school.
Okay.
Does that make sense yet?
I'll make a motion. Sorry. Now, is, could you bring up, uh Jeremy, could you bring up page nineteen of uh? Kevin's report, it's the average cost per inmate, eh? Which one is it, um average cost per inmate per day, Kevin, and it uh. It ranges, I'm not so worried about that, I mean, that's, the the highest one is twenty-five dollars a day. And and this question, I think is for you, Kevin, maybe Jeremy have to chime in as well, because we've heard this before. Cost us to send this inmate to another county. But what do they charge us per day if we send somebody?
So you know what the average cost for inmate?
No, I know what the costs are, you're in Antrim, page, um uh maybe it was eighteen then, Jeremy.
Yeah, it's twenty-five dollars is the gold right now. And that too, had other towns. Cap at sixty, but thirty-five is still typical rate around here right now.
Can you zoom that for me? Oh, you can. This is my, this is my question, just so I understand, I think so. I hope it's some information for uh for residents as well, is this is what it costs the taxpayers of Antrim to have us. If I'm in jail, this is what it costs the taxpayers to house me per day, correct? Okay, and.
Yeah, average cost per inmate.
And if you send me to Blackspur, Jeremy, it's gonna be thirty-five dollars a day?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Plus transportation back and forth.
I just wanna make sure these numbers were, I was.
But I think this is variable cost, this probably doesn't call out a new boiler for the jail and. No, no, it's in the jail and. No, it doesn't take. Absolutely, so, and and as of right now, I mean, this is, this short you two thousand twenty-four, twenty-two inmates. We got what, thirty-six inmates in there right now, so, I mean, this cost would be up higher, the next year you guys can see a higher number.
Total cost, but currently would actually.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions, take a motion, is there a second, second, all those people, please say aye.
Yeah, that's. Thank you, thank you.
House department. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you all for having, uh my name is Shannon Kwonoski, and so. Especially again, I have with me today, a cheering crew, who is. And straighter, and. She is our public. To give the credit, she did this entire work together, so just a lot of money this year, so, I mean, her talents. And we also have a happy. Just adapt and. The services that we. So I'm going to, so just kind of touch on different things that we do, and there's. So, as we went through some of them, future some. In less form of your man, and so we flip to page four, and start out with some. There you go, so. So, um that's just the things that we do. Just, you said something. Stating purpose, some. So we are really, and you can see our stamp out the field. So section. Anywhere, and we've almost done. Oh, I'm sorry, so, yeah, we're good, it was um. Hearing and vision screenings in schools for children, and then last year, we had a. To act to do test screenings, so we want to enter children. Dental decay or dental issues, it's very difficult to concentrate in classroom setting if you are constantly. So for the matter of that, um and they actually, I know about our staff on this one, the state. They actually turned to us at HD and how we. Decade, and they said, you guys have been successfully, how do we do this successfully across the areas of the state? So I want to give shout out to our, our team, because it's really, it's. It's a lot, it says a lot about us when the state's coming to us and saying, you guys have done this and done as well, so. We are out there and doing oral health screenings, and what we do in this is, um. Because we also have dental homes as part of that organization, we do find a child who doesn't have a home dentist. Or needs, you know, mental state work, we usually can work with our own D C N clinics to get them in. Seeing as soon as possible to get problems solved, so. It's a great success story. And turning the page. You know, one of the other things that we do is we are really looking out for moms and babies, as I like to call it. Um we have a story here, and it's about a mother who was having some difficulties with her first child. Um and we were able to work with her as part of our Healthy Futures Program. And when we went to check on her, it, it was not only that, but we were able to provide information on additional support and other programs that she could be. Uh working with and part of, I will say, this week at the Board of Health meeting, we had a presentation from one of our actual. Women that's out in the field working with these new moms and babies, and I can tell you that in the state of Michigan. We have eternal death rate is, there are eighty-eight moms every year that die from things that could very easily be prevented. And we shared a couple of success stories when we were able to do that this week at the Board of Health. So these are the kind of programs reaching out to moms, and we had an example, just quickly, of one mom who was having some. Afterbirth difficulties, some swelling, some things like that, could very easily resulted in death, but our. People were, they saw and they said, no, no, this is not normal, we're going to the doctor right now, um so that was a very good success story. So we are there, um helping moms with a story, that was an example of a mom. Had her first child, um. There were difficulties between her and her husband, and then, you know, he decided to leave, she had to start over with. You know, nothing, trying to find housing, trying to find a job, trying to bring a baby into this world. And we just sat and listened to her, helped her come up with a plan, and she is doing very well right now. Um she has her own place, she has a stable job, and she and the baby are doing excellent, so we're happy to report that. So that's just another program that we handle. We turn the page. All right, um I want to take a minute to talk about our school health division, and we are, we have a number of mental health therapists in the school. One of the things that really helps uh parents is that our therapists are in the school. Parents don't have to come pick up the child, take them to a mental health therapist, and then bring them back to the school, which takes additional time. And they can just stop into the office on their way to their next class or wherever they're going. Uh this has been really well received by all the schools that we are in. Uh I would be remiss, though, if I didn't mention that the funding for this is tied up in with the state budget right now. And we are anxiously waiting to see how this is going to play out, if we will have enough funding to continue doing this at the level that we're doing it now. So, but it is, it's been a great service, um like I said, we, we've had, we have a full schedule. Uh there are students, our therapist schedules are pretty much full. And sometimes there's a waitlist, we try to work that as much as possible, but it's, it's busy, so. We'll stay tuned with that, um. So I'm gonna move on. I think I talked about briefly earlier, our dental clinics north. Um we are unique as a health department in that we do have dental clinics, uh so we have. Uh we have dental clinics.
That's your fault, that's not your fault at all, Shannon, so yeah, thank you. No.
We have dental clinics in the four counties that we serve, and then we go even further than this, because there is such a shortage. I don't know if any of you have tried to get with a new dental provider lately, tried to try, uh look for an appointment with a new dentist, it's difficult. There's shortage, um but if you are a Medicaid recipient or participant, it's even more difficult. So that's the niche that we serve, um our offices are in Harper Springs, Potaski, Sheboygan, Alpena, Last Branch. Traverse City, Mantalona, Gielerd, East Shore, so. Um I like to say that it kind of diversifies our, you know, services and what we do. Uh there's definitely a need for it, and it's definitely a niche that we are there to fulfill and help provide services for. I think the sheriff just spoke about some of the um dear programs that they have, and I was really happy to hear about that. We have two programs, uh Safe and Rise, actually. Uh we actually received national recognition, um Susan Pulaski, who's on our staff, is pictured at the bottom, holding the certificate. She received a state champion award. For being the leader of Safe in Northern Mi- um Northern Michigan. And so the Rise program is in our Atsego County, and then um Safe is in Charlevoix. And Emmett Counties, and Don't Believe We're Antrim, because I think you've got that covered, but we are all working toward the same goal. And that is to have kids live substance-free lives, so we're very fortunate to have students on. Our staff and routine, they do a good job. Alright. I guess it's a part of it, I guess, um. So if you want to take a look at our revenue, you will notice that we are substantially funded through state and federal funds. Um we do a lot with what we have. Um I know that we don't ask too much of our local appropriations requests, um we try to do more with state and federal funds. But I will, I do wanna know how important it is to have that local appropriation. Because that's oftentimes what we use for the match portion of our state and federal grants. And without that, we would be able to do all that we do. We often say that um for the local dollars, for every dollar that we receive, it's, I think, almost like a two dollar, two dollars and some change. Additional that we can bring into the counties that we serve to help with the programs that we provide, so. Looking through our revenues, fees and collections, the majority of it comes from our dental clinics. Not surprising, um they are self-sufficient, we don't put any local preparations into those, whatever they bring in is. Not surprising. Um, they are self-sufficient. We don't put any local preparations into those. Whatever they bring in is what they're spending. Um, again. Grants and donations are just a small portion. It's mostly, and also fees and collections. And those are, if you think about our EH department, where we have sewer septic well permits. Um, food license permits. Those are mostly our permits that you're seeing under fees and collections for HDW. Under the expenditure piece. It's not a surprise that the majority of our expenditures are on personnel services. We don't make things. We don't sell things. We provide services. So it makes sense that we are paying for people and staff to provide those services. Um, our second biggest piece really is contractual and professional. And that is because a lot of, um, our. Money is running through DCN. So we provide the accounting services, the billing services, computer services for our DCN clinics, and then we charge it to them. And it comes through in that line. So that's why it's a little bit higher than some of the other things. Uh, so I guess in summary, um, our total budget for, or our total expenses for twenty twenty-four were thirty-six million nine hundred ninety-three dollars and eight hundred forty-two. Twenty-six million nine hundred ninety-three thousand eight hundred forty-two. I'll get it. I see. And the next page does point to some of our partners that we work with and some foundations that we receive some grant funding and community support from. You're welcome to read through that. I'm not going to read through this list in total, but I will note that Antrim County IT is at the top of the list. It's an awful lot for it, but. We are very much so. With that, trying to be brief because I know you've had a busy agenda today. If there are any questions, I happen to entertain those, or I can reach the experts in the audience and meet some of the questions as well.
Cheers. Yeah, just, just wondering, a couple of years ago, they were working on converting. The environmental files to electronic. Just wondering where that's at.
I do that. Thank you. So, um, Emmett County, we are in the tail end of that project. They have all been converted. Uh, we are going through now and trying to make sure that they're all equal to properly. Uh, it's made it a lot easier to dig through. And then Antrim County, we are in the process of working on that right now. Um, they actually came. Yesterday, must be. In touch with all of this, um, to pick up all the files from the Antrim County office. So. Have to see me.
Oh, good. Everyone already got to see this.
I, I.
To help the department.
And I, every year, I just want to again, thank you for partnering with the townships for point of sale, septic inspections. Um, I know, um, certainly Milton, uh, has appreciated it for many years, and I know Health Rapids initiating it now as well. So. Couldn't do it without your help. So appreciate it.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Health Department of Northwest Michigan's annual report now second.
From the second. And discuss further discussion. I was fairly pleased to say I.
Oh, yeah.
Anyone opposed. So, thanks very much. Appreciate it. Good, um, Conservation Resource Alliance, Meredith Freebie. Good morning. Yeah, I'm fine. Thank you.
Good morning. Um, so my name is Meredith. I'm a project manager at the Conservation Resource Alliance. Um, you might be familiar with Kim Vawke. She's probably done this in the past. She's our. Program director, and she's kind of shifting more into that role, and I'm shifting more into the project manager role for our Jordan River watershed. So hopefully it's more of me throughout the years. I'm excited to meet you all.
Down there.
Um, so if you're unfamiliar with the Conservation Resource Alliance, I'd like to just run through who we are, um, because I have the menu before, um, my email poll to share that about who we are and what we do. We have thirteen staff. We're a nonprofit organization. We serve fifteen counties in Northwest Michigan, um, Antrim County being one of them. Um, we've been in operation since nineteen sixty-eight, and we originally started as all the resource conservation and development council. It's a government entity. But we split off to be a nonprofit, um, in the eighties or nineties. Started to kind of reach areas that maybe government couldn't at the time. And we're funded by memberships, donations, and grants from, um, diverse sources. Our primary focus at this time are what's called our river care and wild roots programs. Um, and. Those serve our overall mission of coordinating a sensible stewardship of the land and water throughout Northwest Michigan. And these are some, um, examples of the work that we do. So we work on road stream crossings, tree plantings, stream reconnections like dam removals. And then stream bank stabilization and habitat projects. This is our river care work plan map for twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven. Um, so it just kind of shows you, uh. All the areas that we serve and have about sixty projects on this map. New projects are added annually. And you can see up, up in the north corner that we, um, have quite a bit of projects up here that I'll get to. And then this is our wild roots map, uh, to tree plantings that we do. Um, it's a little outdated. We're working on that data map, but again, you can see. Um, the area that we serve and the tree plantings that we have up in Antrim County. So, um, now I'm going to focus more exactly on what we're doing in the Jordan River watershed, which is, um, overlapping with Antrim County. So the orange squares on this map are the projects that we have completed, um, previously. And there's thirteen listed there. Um, these are just our river care projects. So, um. Barrier removals or road stream crossing improvements, things like that. And then the marine circles are projects that we're either actively working on or kind of where we're focused in the future. So projects A, B, and C are either in construction or completed. Um. Projects B and C are on the Jordan River, and those were, um, specifically where the appropriation went for this year. And then, um, we're moving now into towards Deer Creek and Marvin Creek. Um, on some road train crossings over there on those sides, and those are in design right now, and I'll get more into those in just a second. And then. Um, upcoming in the future, we're going to focus more on Jordan River tributaries and the green river headwaters. And some, um, crossings and the replacement over there. So, um, we've done a lot in this area and we love creating to the beauty of our natural waters here. And we're excited to keep moving forward with this project. So, um, the report has, you know, a lot of the meat and the details, and I thought it might be fun for us just to kind of go through pictures and do a bit of show and tell and exactly give you a visual of what we've done. So, um, I'm going to start with the construction photos from this summer, um, on the Jordan River and the Deer Creek crossings that we worked on. So this is the southern Jordan River crossing at Jordan River Road that, um, was under construction this summer and is almost completed. Um. The only thing that's left is the paving and guard rail and some vegetation. So this is a before photo. You can see them. There's three culverts sitting underneath the road. And, um. There's kind of, the stream is incredibly wide on the downstream end, so it's about two times the natural width just because of these undersized culverts. Um, they're rusting, failing, and it, the road here provides, or erodes a lot into the stream. So it's, um. You know, infrastructure concern as well as an ecological concern. And then this is a construction photo. Um, this is Rob or Bob from the road commission, you might have known. He's, um, taking some elevation measurements of. The piles that have been driven to, um. Service the base for the timber bridge. And then here is a, um, almost complete construction photo. This is a triple span timber bridge, so it's, um. Allows for the natural river flow to flow underneath. Um, there's no more constraints. There's less flooding. Um, and then. It's hard to see, but there is some, um, strong sides. There's vegetation that's going to grow as well to additionally support, um. Minimized erosion and just less, um, infrastructure issues and less maintenance road commissions down the line. So that's number one. And then this is the northern Jordan River crossing at Jordan River Road. Um. These two Jordan River crossings were specifically what that appropriation funded this year. And this one, um, the upstream end, the river is actually like a hundred and fifty feet wide because it's impounded here. So it's basically a small dam for it was before construction. Um, you can see all of that pounded water upstream. And then downstream, you see the remnants of, um, a beaver dam. So the road commission has to continuously come and, um. Free the water and get rid of the debris that the beavers put into the culverts. Um, so again, just an increased maintenance need there. And, um, just like other crossing. Um, heavy erosion contributing to the stream as well outside. So that's number four picture. And then here's a construction photo from earlier this summer. Um, the bump it on the north side is completed, and they're working on preparing the southern side for pile driving. And you can already see from this photo that the water has, um, dewatered from the upstream end. So you can kind of see those natural islands forming. Um, and how there's more room for, for water and less, um, impacts of potential flooding since there's no more, no longer water and counted on that upstream side. And this is the photo of pile driving. Um, so you can see that that thing machine has a wooden pile in it, and that usually comes into the ground. So that's how they build these, um, beautiful timber bridges. And then this is the most recent photo that I got. They're working on the superstructure here. Um, and again, the site and the other Jordan River site are going to be paved later this summer. Um, and guardrail, guardrail will be built as well, and they'll be complete very soon. This is the third site that we were working on, um, in construction this summer and last summer, um, as a part of this phase of the Jordan River projects. This is Deer Creek at Polar Road. This site has a very significant pounding situation on the downstream and that you can see, um. And again, sound like broken record, but erosion, you know, um. Um. Road commission maintenance needs, just, um, continuous similar problems at all of these sites. This one also has significant rushing water you can see there, which is also a fish passage issue. Um, so here they're working on, um. I think they're working on the culvert. Um, they've dewatered on one side and got the pepper dam up. And then this is a complete photo. The site is complete now. Um, so this is what the other sites would kind of look like with the guardrail and paving completed. Um. This I did see some challenges. Um, we had some construction or, um, contractor issues, and. We met those challenges by hiring a more experienced contractor for pile driving, and then we also adjusted the design of it by needing steel H piles, which you can kind of see on the sides there. Um, because there was also unforeseen circumstances with the, um, underground elements. So. We met those challenges and as you can see, it still resulted in a successful project and we learned some things from it. And so this is our next phase, um, of sites that we're working on in the Jordan River watershed. I thought it'd be, um, helpful to show you before photos of where we're working next and where we're headed, um. For our next phase of projects. This is Deer Creek at Barbara Road. Um. The site is upstream of Deer Creek at Polar Road, so we're kind of working in tandem and to, to free the river here. And again, pounding on the downstream end, um. Very, very fast water, you can see, which is leads to aggressive issues and then also fish passage issues too. So this site is in design right now. Um, it's almost completed and they're applying for permits. And this is Marvin Creek Tributary at Pestic Road. So this is by the Marvin Natural Area, if you're familiar, and, um. Very incredibly beautiful area, but it's got some feeling, um, the infrastructure on these beautiful rural roads that we're excited to work on. You can see this culvert here is perched, um, so, um, another fish passage issue, and you can see active erosion occurring there as well. Uh, and this site is in Antrim County. All three of these Marvin Creek sites are right on the border of Antrim and Charlevoix. And this one specifically Antrim. And then this is Marvin Creek at Pestic Road, um, similar issues here. All three of these Marvin Creek sites are going to be, are, are, are designed with, um, concrete culverts. Um, so they'll be installed and resized into the stream so that they don't. Well, first of all, so that they have natural substrate in the culvert, but also so that they don't raise the road more than five inches at the site. And then this is the final site on Marvin Creek. Um. This is at the corner of Marvin and Pestic Roads, and the locals call this spot Marvin Pond because of how much flooding it sees. You can see it even from the photo on that. There was reset flooding and, um, and then road issues that will, the road commission will have to address. Um, and so I think whole group here will allow for full river flow, limit flooding, limit erosion, um, and by natural. So those are the projects we're working on that's better in design right now, um, and mapping out that for construction in the next few years. So that's all I had to share with you today. I did want to mention that you'll notice from our upcoming request that we are asking for an increased appropriation this year. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we're funded, predators are funded diversively through federal, state, and local, um, contributions. And, um, as Shannon mentioned, um. Local contributions are incredibly important for us. One, because they, um. Well, we're, you know, we feel we're serving your community, and so it's, it means a lot to get a contribution from your community. You know, it feels like we're really working together, but also because we can highlight them in other grants. Um, and use them as match. And so it's really kind of a domino effect of a contribution. And, um. In these coming times, we have continuously increased construction costs. Uh, we have a really unique rural characteristics of the watersheds. And we also have, um, increased uncertainty and, um. Increased competition for limited viral funding. So we're asking all of our partners to consider increased contribution, but, you know, they feel comfortable with and makes sense if, um, your budget's as well. So. Uh, thank you again for your contribution, and it's been a pleasure to work in your county.
Questions. I want to thank you very much. Any questions? I have a question. Um, what is the life expect expectancy of a timber bridge?
Uh, it can be, I think, like fifty to a hundred years or more. I think a hundred years or. Yeah, there, it's, um. I, it might seem like they might last not as long as steel bridges or something like that, but they actually have the same. They're treated as well. Um, and, and what is underwater actually doesn't rot.
Okay, motion accept, uh, make the motion accept the Conservation Resource Alliance two thousand twenty-four annual report.
Yeah, thank you. Second.
Yep.
Uh, move to second. I was afraid, please say I, uh, I see, no opposed. Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Brian.
Good morning, guys.
I'm sorry, before you say, Jeremy, we're doing that on the audio with the microphone. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so, uh, are you looking? This is my first time doing this.
Use the down arrow key on the. Remote.
All right, so, uh. Our office, uh, basically is in charge of prosecuting votes, uh, for listed cases, uh, felons. Also due to house, ultimately based in cases, using like, um, cases, um. Um, it's constitutional office. Um. As you know, we've had a lot of, uh, last year, I took everybody to the journal for twice the end of the year, uh. It's roster retiring. Stacy Christel, she's playing, she got one, so. But, uh, all of that journal was. Um, so we now have three attorneys, myself, and three support staff, staff four, we're down three, but I think we're. And, I guess. Uh, so, uh, generally our funding cost at county level, uh, which has, um. Or probably, so yes, I think some of the larger offices have some state funding now with, uh, the, I sort of had a product in the last. And right now, uh, when the prosecutor is quite as productive as it used to be back in the day. Um, that's okay, I guess, but, uh. The, uh. Nonetheless, we want to get, that he is a prosecutor, happy to have her. Uh, our budget is being fairly stable over the years. Um. Yeah, I anticipate that to continue at this point. Uh. Most of our, uh, yet our budget comes from the county fund, uh, except for some of the bigger rights. Uh, so, but it's. Partially outstanding. Terms of. Terms of uh these numbers, um. Yeah, mentioned, we're more confident of twenty twenty four versus twenty twenty three numbers only because of twenty three. Uh we've started transitioning to where I do case management software, um and. But I think our numbers are slightly up, that trash has continued, uh it's twenty twenty five. And uh. Probably well, um. Terms of power of operates, uh. Making steps to try to give them time, so to speak, and could be our largely a paperless office, also firing everything entirely. Prosecuted by term hell, which is a management software design specific prosecution services. Prosecuting a Chinese association of Michigan got a grant to basically put that software in all three counties. And uh. So we were one of the first batch uh that received it, um and uh. You know, with any software, there are challenges, uh and. Most of those. It's not a pandemic and certainly. Program that was. So um. With the digital age comes digital challenges, uh we're certainly dealing with a lot more body camera footage that we have to do. Lot more surveillance camera footage. Our camera, those kinds of things, uh up to a lot of people just blow up, change parts, weird stuff. That's great to. To be in. The powerful evidence has done some of the PS all sides, um and uh. But it's also can be time consuming uh to have to quickly go on that stuff. But um. So it does sort of increase work, both in that sense, um. The other thing is that when you come, folks at the jail have to ability, you know, to be. When I first started this job, it was basically a full policy, that was it. Uh and those calls were recorded, but now they also do texts, you know, chats, things like that, all of those are also recorded. Uh it's not like we sit there and spend all day sort of monitoring that stuff. So we just don't have time to do that. But it does add another level sometimes of things that you want them to be. I talked about uh PDK, uh. And and that that program is is working out fairly well, very supportive of us, given the event, uh. Pretty responsive, drinks customer service, say no, you know, why keep us in the state of Michigan, honest, uh. They have, so um. As a new uh prosecutor, I've been, I want to thank everybody that had a lot of welcome, um. And then the job now, uh six months or, and. So like learning things, so okay, but certainly. Much more up to speed than I was when I first started, I like to tell people that it's kind of like drinking water out of tire bolts at first. With a lot of the transition, uh prior to my coming into the office, uh was bit of a backlog in terms of cases that people leave, I think. Most of that has went the old way, still cases out there, but uh. I'd love to have that time. Sure, uh just making sure we're all up to speed, everything, um. And we're. Busy, um not sitting under his. At each other, um just lots to do, but uh. Okay, so if I admire you, then keep out of the community. District work is a certain part of this, people, and so are busy too, so, um. But. You know, I. One of my goals, I think, for next year essentially is to. Sort of give us legal training for law enforcement to invest something, so get shelves and I want to pay. I think that's important, I should listen to that. Status that a lot is always changes. So that's about all I have.
Just, okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you for working on catching up on things. I can tell you that I've had a lot less constituents reach out to me in the last few months than what I had the first four years I was commissioner, so I know you're you're being more proactive and I really appreciate that. I did have a constituent recently that um. He he reached out to me again, it's it's been go ongoing, Richard Frisky, he's had some apples that were stolen years ago. And they got this guy, they found him in the U P and he got charged there, but apparently there's some sort of charges that have to be filed here where the crime took place, so if you could just follow up on that. I mean, it's frustrating, probably for you, it's frustrating for them because they're trying to get their apple boxes back and it's just a complicated situation, but I I I just do commend you for uh. Instead of having numerous cases that I've been alerted to, it's significantly smaller than it was, so I I thank you for uh being more proactive in addressing some of these crimes.
That, um and I would, you know, again echo what Jess is saying, uh thank you for volunteering to come here in Antrim County. Um that uh last time I heard, um it's probably changed, but then I think uh it's now getting loose and I know now Lake recently are running without prosecutors, um so I I hear you loud and clear in terms of it apparently isn't the most attractive job it used to be, so thanks for, I I do appreciate you being here.
Thanks, Bill. Uh I'll make a motion to approve the project attorney's annual report and also give support.
Hey, move this, with any further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Yeah.
I suppose, thank you, thanks again.
Thank you.
We'll see you in yep.
Uh Ms. Chloe, you know, time, would you like to, should I join us? Ah wonderful.
Morning, hello.
How's it going?
Good, thank you, yes.
So I'm a reporter, I'm the director with the Department of Health and Food Services for Antrim, Shelby and Emmett Counties.
We'll let Mike down to you, thank you.
Okay, I want to apologize because what I didn't put in my annual report was the construction project. I'm Jeremy and I are best friends because of construction fashion, so. Jeremy will have dinner sometime soon, right, but I really do, that that was a long process for the department and for the county, I appreciate the county's willingness to adhere to some of the standards that the state has imposed upon us for our building, so I appreciate that. Um and as you know, M D H S is a large organization, we're fourteen thousand employees, um health and human services. I handle human services, so assistance payments, child welfare and uh I specifically handle adult services, so I'm just going to give you kind of a high overview of some of the things going on in the department in our counties specifically. Um so our assistance, uh payments programs, remember, we work in a universal caseload system, so uh Antrim, Shelby, Emmett is partner with Shaboy and Preskill and we process all assistance payment um applications for those by counties. Uh in twenty twenty four, we finally, as a department, finished all of our Medicaid redeterminations that had been on hold during the pandemic, um and I can say that we successfully completed two point nine million redeterminations for Medicaid as a state, which was a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of overtime for my staff and the staff across the state. After those redates, almost one point eight billion people stayed on health, which was uh, we need that service. Unfortunately, about eight hundred seventy thousand people did not stay on Medicaid and that's because they did try and paperwork and we really looked at that as a department, what more we've been doing for outreach, but we did phone calls, text messages, we put special units in to call people to do those, so it was unfortunate that those folks decided on keeping them on Medicaid. I think uh what we often forget, even as administration in the in the department is when they were doing those redates, our staff still had to continue, we process other applications, so on average, we do about nine hundred um food applications, housing and emergency needs, daycare applications, so it while we focused heavily in twenty twenty four on redates, we still had other people on for assistance that our staff had to take care of. In twenty four, Antrim County residents received about four point nine million dollars worth of benefits, uh which was a decrease from this year twenty three, again, because um Medicaid decreased and we lost a good assistance times. Um we did see a big financial spike in our cash assistance program and and I was like to say this, our cash assistance program is, in the older days, and I say older days back in the seventies, was really um families who came in and received a monthly stipend depending on how many children they had, and that is is still the program, it's really kind of a work first. Come in, you just receive cash assistance until you find a job and then you work out of that program. We have very few people in that program, uh most of the people who receive our cash assistance these days are family members with a guardianship or a caring for their children, for children that aren't theirs, uh naturally. Um so it's not a burden program, but and because of that, because across the state, that's not a burden program, the department's able to allocate some extra funding to that, to those recipients. Um so we saw a very big increase in in that line in particular, because we gave stipends to families, zero to six got a seventeen hundred dollar one time stipend and kids six and older got a six hundred dollar stipend in like September, October of uh September of twenty four, which was a nice boost for that, but that really had skewed the homeless force and cash assistance. Um our community resource program, so I have one main resource uh coordinator who works for my tri-county. She does a fantastic job of trying to make sure that people get non-emergency medical transportation taken care of. She works with um local agencies to make sure that we have things for foster kids and our foster parents. Um we've had, unfortunately, a few fires, um in in Anna County in particular, where she's really helped families get what they needed outside of Salvation Army, but helped other community organizations. Uh and we have a small budget uh that we get for that program, a lot of our money goes to mana, uh we buy protein drinks uh for the tri-county and um a few other things that we could do here and there. Um we're always looking for volunteer drivers, so should you want to volunteer, you just have to call me, I can get it too. A piece of child welfare, you know, we're still still dealing with those uh, even get safe, judge that, um. Which, you know, we're committed to keeping kids safely in their home whenever we whenever we can, we uh maintain a couple of contracts with private agencies that work in home with our families to keep kids safe. Uh this past year, we did, we were a pilot county for the North Country Community Mental Health, um with with a new um screen tool for kids coming into foster care called the Michigans, which helps us determine if mental health or behavioral health services are needed and that those can start immediately. In years past, we've had some lag with all of that and making sure the kids got those assessments and when when could all of that happen, it happens the minute those kids come into care, so that's been helpful, so we, if they were receiving services, they don't end, and if they haven't and needed them, we can start those immediately. That pilot now is statewide and is working pretty well.
I showed that morning, I think you got a clicker, if there's a screen, I mean, if you want to move the screen, you've got the clicker there, so.
Yeah, use the down arrow.
Down arrow.
There we go, there's my child lawyer, so.
Yeah.
I should have brought all the pictures of the before and after construction. Um, okay, so child worker, we did lose a staff member um in allocations this past year, so we're down to four CPS workers. Uh one foster care worker for Antrim and yeah, Bill can attest to this, back when I started a hundred years ago. I think we had four foster care workers because we had so many kids in care, we're down to one foster care worker and I have three child welfare workers that are housed um in our Antrim office. Uh we did two hundred and twenty one CPS investigations last year in forty cases confirmed, so. That means that forty families, we found it, we found a proprietor instead of you said like occurred, um and so those other you know, hundred and eighty that we didn't, we always try to um direct families to services, you know, if it meets criteria for you to come to us and travel up there, something maybe has happened and it might not meet that level of um a substantiation, so we try to connect uh those families with community resources. Uh we only filed four petitions in public court last year, uh ending the year with nine kids in care, which seems high from last year because we were only at two, but nine kids in care is a pretty good number for Antrim County. Uh we work, again, really hard to keep kids with their own families. Uh we continue to license our our own homes, which has been beneficial, um we have fourteen licensed homes right now. Uh we had to go down to one licensing worker again because of funding at the at the state level, um. But I think that we're slated to uh license six more homes this year, so we're excited about that. Um adult, we, I do cover adult services, um I'm the director for adult services for what we call our business service center, so I cover adult. I manage the adult services program for the department uh for thirty nine counties with a staff of like forty six, so it's a large, a large geographical area with very little staff. In Antrim County, we have one adult worker uh who actually just retired last Friday, um we've got someone else coming in in the next couple of weeks. But she did um sixty two investigations, she manages on a monthly load about seventy home health cases every month and does that all on her own, well, making sure that our elders and and our older adult population is safe, so. Um she was phenomenal, I'm excited about the the new staff that will come in, I think she'll do just as well, but that's a, that's a big, it's a big ask for one person. And then finally, you know, why am I here, uh we always appreciate that the board or the commissioners um give the department some money to help uh with some miscellaneous things, particularly for our foster families. So this last year, we spent about thirteen thousand dollars, some of that is for board pay, my board member pay. Um but you also help support foster families um with some medical supplies that Medicaid wouldn't cover. Uh some daycare assistance for a little one who needed to be in a specialized daycare. You helped retain our foster families by helping support our picnics and some retention that we do give cards that we try to give out to our foster families. Our shop is a hero and just in the last couple of years, we've tried to send more kids to camp, so um I think we sent twelve kids to camp and then three youth uh with driver's training who who and for driver's training, kids have to say and have a job that they are going to, so they need a car, they need a driver's license to get to a job. Uh and we work with all of our school districts to identify those kids, so we sent three kids to driver's training, which is not cheap for families these days, so we appreciate that that's already helped us with that. And with that, I stay within my fifteen minutes. Any questions?
Any questions for me? Thank you for being here, morning, the motion to accept, definitely a motion. If you there's one. All right, supported by Ray, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose.
Thanks so much, Eric.
Thank you. Uh Antrim County Register, Dean Daniel Horst are written submission paddles here today, but uh can I get a motion to accept the? Is there a second? Possible, uh it's been uh motion is supported, any questions? There being no questions, Patty, any comments you want to make? Okay.
Hello. Um this year I took the opportunity before Brad left and I was kind of curious to see where our expenses were for two thousand twenty four. He came back and he told me that our expenses were about two hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars, that included our salary, benefits, whole package. So I just wanted to point out that our office did deposit over six hundred and eighty thousand into the general fund with our expenses, total was about three hundred and eighty thousand deposited in the general fund, so I'm pretty happy with that, pretty proud to to do that for the county.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty, thank you. It's moving second, all those in favor, uh please say aye.
Yes.
Or opposed, thank you. Uh okay, open eye now. Annual for finish, thank you everyone. Uh Chair's Office, Jail Administration, uh looking for a motion to uh authorize board chair to execute an agreement between Antrim County and Canteen Services, a contingent on satisfactory legal review. Identify the jail cook as a position to be discontinued and authorize the finance director administrator to make the budget amendments from one oh one, three oh one cook wages and benefits to one oh one, three five, one seven three five, six hundred prisoner board.
Uh we'll make the motion, thank you.
I'll second it. You'll second it, uh any questions? Good morning, how are you? Hey, I'm good, thank. I'm good, thank you. No questions?
Just wondering how it's been going since. We have kind of transitioned to them. How how's it been going to spend over a year now?
Uh, well, we did, we tran- transitioned to cellmate.
Right.
And then, uh, Tigs just took over this last people. So they, that has been going very well. And then with Tim resigning, we actually have somebody in there cooking. So it it's been going very well.
Good.
And and, um, Jeremy, on the green sheet under number seven, I think it's just a type. Once the board commissioner approves, we can sign the contract.
It's in twenty twenty-five.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Go ahead.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Sherri. Thank you. Good job.
Next section requires authorize Antrim County Sheriff, Antrim County Sheriff to execute the application in agreement with vested interest in canines for velocity class. The Antrim County Sheriff's Canine Unit.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second it.
Thank you. Moving second it. Questions for Brett?
That's what I'm saying.
All right.
Just another, uh, investigating, it's just, uh, busy donations to just make sure that they're going to the right places and. Uh, I think the total to, since they've been in, I don't know, organization that they're right, roughly six thousand plus, it's about. And so.
So. Well, how long does this best last? What lasts the life of the dog?
Uh, normally, it's like five to six years is otherwise expected to pass. So we'll probably eventually do one again, but there's a lot of departments that. Do it two times in a row for a dog, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, boss. Thank you.
So moving supportive. Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, all the favor, please say aye.
Yeah.
Anyone opposed? Uh, uh, look for, uh, this is a bit of a animal control kennel flooring project. Looking for a motion to authorize release of funds to Welsh tile and marble in the amount of twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for the. Refinish of the animal shelter kennel floors and authorize Board Chair to sign a contract for this, sir.
I'll make the motion.
Awesome.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Moving second, uh, questions, uh, which is here. If there's any questions, yeah. Chair, go ahead, Jess.
Just, just curious, we didn't get another bill. This is the only one that came or?
Someone became, there was people that showed interest, um, some local people, but honestly, uh, nobody felt that they could. Do it at the level that we were expecting.
And it's on the budget.
Is this, yeah, is this something that we get, we can take out of that?
Yes, out of the, um, donation.
Donation, yeah, okay.
Yeah, all those in favor, please say aye.
Yeah.
I oppose. Uh, Antrim. County Transportation looking for a motion authorized chair to execute the indemnification, indemnification agreement between the Village of Bel Air and Antrim County for repairs to the. Village of Bel Air's emergency vehicles by A C T.
And that motion, I'm see forward.
Looked supportive. Questions? Chair.
Just. Wondering. We have the mechanics that we will add more, even though, I mean, this is one we've added. I mean, it's on here. We've had Torch Lake and. And Central Lake Village.
Yeah. Two, two foot line, um, mechanics, the, um. We were struggling with one at. At at that level, uh, typically. Going way back, A C T had one and a half. Um. The, uh. We. We're looking to get actually more work even than this to to fill the film to full time mechanics.
Thank you.
Okay. Good. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Uh.
Want to pose? You. Uh, Barnes Park rate increase Lindsay is with us, uh, still with us, uh, this morning. I'm looking for a motion to set Barnes Park camping permit prices for twenty twenty-six. At forty-two dollars for electric sites and twenty-eight dollars for rustic sites.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Last part.
Okay, those are supported. Um, questions for Lindsay?
It's kind of one of those.
Okay, no questions. See, that's all those in favor, please say aye.
Aha.
I just want to pose. Lindsay, thank you for putting all that together. It's very helpful.
With feelings.
Uh. Uh, hey. Administration, uh, Northern Lakes Economic Alliance Agreement for Services, looking for a motion to authorize the board chair. To execute a three-year agreement with the Northern Lakes Economic Alliance pages with us today too.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, move this, uh, move the second, uh, questions. Jess.
I just, I just to comment, I guess, um.
And just to come.
Every year they get this big increase because they base it off the value of property in Antrim County and. A whole bunch of things that we support. North Country Community Mental Health hasn't gotten an increase since two thousand. And. I just, I don't see it. So I just wanted to.
Other, I. Right. I have a question, um. Uh, District Five, is there? Two now, is there anybody in District Five that's the eastern part of the county that, uh, benefits from N L E A?
We do work across the entire county, so anytime we get a request from a community anywhere in the county. We're responding to that. That includes businesses and local units of government. Um. We have worked with Warner Township. We've worked with some of the businesses in Warner Township for, um, some of the business. Locations and expansions that have occurred there, um, and elsewhere across the country.
Okay, and and it, and two years ago, because these are three-year agreements, what what was the amount that was, uh? Asked for three years ago, do we know?
Why they're looking for that, um, great, they were instrumental in keeping the ironworks here. And L E A was, which is probably the largest tax base that you have in Warner Township.
Yeah, okay, good to know, good to know. Um, is also too, is there anybody at this table? I mean, I don't, do they, I mean, and and L E A has a board, I would imagine. Is there anybody at at this table that sits on that board?
I do, and Jeremy does.
Okay, okay.
We have five, um, representatives for each of the four counties that we serve. So that includes businesses, um, or local government leaders representing each of those counties.
Okay.
So you have a twenty-member board?
Mm-hmm.
Usually that, usually there's who that don't ever, that don't show up, so.
That's a big.
Yeah. Do you got that number for Ray?
Jeremy can have it.
Okay. Other questions while Jeremy's still working on that?
Just look at the direct funding that helps secure, I mean, five billion. More than seventeen million capital investment for projects in Antrim County, I mean. Speaks for itself, but they do close. But I just know that I've had several constituents that. They have a project they want to do. And they cannot move one shovel of dirt until they have the Tiff district or whatever. All the bureaucracy in place, and in order to do that. It pushes the project back another full year. So.
That's not them, though.
That's not them. I mean.
I mean. The better labs to get going because of government bureaucracy, but they're moving.
Yeah. And it has nothing to do with N L E A.
Uh, any other questions for Paige? She can sit down if we know.
No.
Thank you, Paige.
Thank you.
Very much.
Wasn't there anyone with sort of help as I'm trying to? I did have one more question, just after us, because this is. And is this four counties? That are involved in N L E A? Has there ever been a, uh, a time when a county decided they didn't want to be a part of it? Do we know that?
Yes.
Yeah. It did happen. Okay.
Yeah, Emma did, and then they came back and wanted to get back in it again.
Okay, all right. Good to know.
Yeah.
Okay.
A few years ago.
All right. Thanks. Let me ask you this, Ray. I mean, are you prepared to vote without that number?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, um, um. Did have a motion, is it on the second? Um. Uh, and so all those in favor, uh, please say aye.
Yes.
Anyone opposed?
Hi.
Okay, well, uh, four in favor, one opposed. Like you being, uh, chairs. Okay, uh, moving on, then reports, county administrators reports.
Underneath Antrim County Transportation, uh, at the last C O A Board of Directors meeting, uh. Christine came and presented a couple of options, trying to get ridership up. I commended her for doing that there, and I'd like to do that here also. She is, um, working diligently on moving our. Our, uh, transportation system into being able to take more riders. She, um, is looking at doing a, a loop as such that. People can get on somewheres, go around, and they can go like to the, uh, pharmacy or the doctor, and then they know that in an hour or two, whatever it is. They'll be coming back around again to pick them up and take them where they got to go. They're working with, um, Mansalona to get something set up like that also to be able to come, you know, if they got to come to the doctor's office here. They'll have a schedule for that, so. She's working really hard on moving forward with making things better for. The seniors and for everybody in the county at large to make the transportation system work, so. I just want to make sure everybody was aware of that was happening.
Thank you. Uh, questions for Jeremy on his report?
Just a comment that, uh, Public Safety Center, we're not the only ones around here, uh. Looking at that. Upgrading our facilities. You know, uh, there was that C E O and Charlotte, right?
Yeah.
Both of them are, uh, and I don't think we're, we're charged as much as those guys are in the, in. In Texas, so they're going to be doing a, uh, bond or a. Uh. Some sort of village themselves, so.
Yep.
Finally, I have an answer. Sorry about that. Sixty-eight thousand is what it was set for the, uh, start of the last contract.
It was sixty, is?
Sixty.
Okay, so I mean, basically the same.
Uh.
Oh, yes, it's be right. Okay, thank you, thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, anything else for Jeremy? Any other questions for Jeremy or his report or anything? For sharing is include some, uh, information in Senator's office. Uh, uh. Chairman's report, uh, just, uh, in, uh. I don't have it. The library merge did pass over up after it's, uh, uh, Mel Township, the upside library this week. Um. And also just briefly, as I'm sure many of you heard, we did lose another, uh, pillar of the community, Rick Young, uh, many people knew, uh, owner of the Village Market, both Alden and, uh. And, uh, and Al Grant, and so, uh. A huge loss for, uh, for the community, and so my thoughts, all of our thoughts go out to him and his family, so. Anything else? Anything else?
Thank you.
Nope, Ray? Nope, Tess? Okay, thank you very much, everyone. You have a public comment. What's that? Was there anyone else public comment? My apologies, apologies. Any public comment? Thank you now.